All right, welcome everybody. It is 1 o'clock on the nose. I'm going to stop sharing my screen here. I'm trying a Facebook experiment again to try and stream this live on our Facebook page. I'm not sure if it's working or not, but we'll see if it does. So people are starting to file into the room. I'm so excited to be able to do this session on Howard Kotler, and I'm so excited about the guests that have agreed to join me today. And I'd also like to point out that if you're good at snooping around and looking at all of the attendees who are in the room, there are a lot of people who knew Howard well and were close to Howard, his students, people even went to school with him. I know that Mark Burns is in the room. I saw Wesley Harvey, lots of other artists whom Howard meant a great deal. A few housekeeping things before I get started, and I'm just going to show a few little slides at first. This, this object study class comes out of a series of classes that I taught at Syracuse University that started back in January and ended face-to-face, of course, in March with COVID-19. So we picked up on the web, and I've had an incredible series of guests who have joined me, and we've really made some lemonade out of some lemons. And I'm happy to say that this is my very first object study session back in the museum since March. So some of the employees are allowed to periodically come in. So I've got access to be able to look at art again, which is a big landmark for me. So it was amazing to be able to pull some of Howard Kotler's pieces from the Eversons collection to be able to share with you. And we're pretty ambitious in terms of the amount of art that we want to talk about today. Let me go ahead and share my screen again, and I'm going to show a few slides just to kind of get things started. Okay. So I thought that I would share an image today. A lot of Howard Kotler's work was born of activism in the 1960s and the 1970s. And this plate series, which Judy Schwartz shared with us, I thought was all too appropriate for the social unrest that we're dealing with in the Black Lives movement. Judy, can you remember the, tell us the name of this series?
This is the American Supperware series. It was a box of 12 plates that all fit in its own individual leather pouch with the title of each piece embroidered on each of the leather pouches, and they all fit into a box. And I'm going to show you a slide of what the lucite box looked like.
Incredible.
All meticulously done.
So I guess this is a great time to introduce my guests, and I'm going to have them help me chat about some of the pieces that I'm about to show. Let me give a few housekeeping announcements. If you can go full screen on your screen, it will help you to see the images rather than seeing all of the people in gallery view. And then, once we are back, if you click on presenter view, you should be able to see larger images of the pieces, because I'm going to be holding up pieces for the camera and sharing them, and Judy and Paul are going to be doing the same. So first, it's my great pleasure to introduce a longtime, close, close friend and associate of Howard Kotler. Judy counts Howard as one of the biggest mentors in her career. She recently retired from teaching at New York University, and she's going to have a lot to tell you about Howard Kotler. So Judy, say hi to everybody.
Hello, everybody. I'm really thank, thank you for having me. I'm very happy to be here.
And Judy, tell us, so we're winning the award today for the best backgrounds. Can you tell us where you are, the environment that you're talking from?
I'm currently, you know, switching from an academic life professor now back to my studio. So I took a degree in millinery design, and I have my hat studio here. I don't know if you can see some of the hat blocks in the very far back. And I have lots of different kinds of embroidery machines. So I sew. I do jewelry now, and I do lots of fabric design. And I'm experimenting with a bunch of fabrics and shawls and things that I've been working on. So I'm back to a studio life. On the right side is my computer, the right side of my brain, and the left side of the studio is the creative side.
All right. So speaking of hats, the next person that I'm going to introduce wears many of them. Great segue. So Paul Cattula is someone that I've known about and known for a long time now. He is an eminent gallerist and runs Paul Cattula Project, where he's been representing the estate of Howard Kotler very, very ably, and also notably represents James Melchert and has very, very close ties to James Melchert. He teaches at Michigan State University, and he's an incredible studio artist in his own right. Notably, he was in, I believe, the 2000 Ceramic National at the Everson, and I'm desperate to have one of his dinnerware sets here at the Everson. So Paul, say hi. Nope, you're muted.
Do it again. Hello, everyone. Delighted to be here.
And you are broadcasting from?
Actually, from my dining room, because it's over 90 degrees in the gallery today, because the AC is not working, and my landlord isn't fixing it immediately. So.
It's great to see the James Melchert tile piece behind you. So I want to give everybody just a few little reminders. First, that the Everson has taken a great deal of its programming online. You can see programming from the curators from our education department. If you know of children or yourself being stuck at home needing things to do, the Everson has provided a range of things from children's activities to studio visits and me doing these weekly sessions. So www.everson.org, and while you're there, you can continue with your researching. So the Everson has digitized much of its archives, including the archives of the Ceramic Nationals. You can find all of the catalogs and all of the pieces that have made it into the Everson's permanent collection at www.everson.org. Go to Exhibitions and then click on the Ceramic Archive. All right. So we're going to be talking about Howard Kotler today, and I just wanted to mention that Howard Kotler was an amazing discovery for me when I was a young artist as an undergrad at the University of Nebraska in the early to mid 1990s. And I never got to meet him. He passed away shortly before I became involved in ceramics. But when my professor introduced me to his work, it was shortly after the Face2Face book came out. It was like meeting a kindred spirit in a lot of ways. So I've long admired his rebellious spirit, his activist spirit, the way that he accesses art history, just with this image of him calling back to another flamboyant ceramic artist, George Orr, who's come up time and again in our conversations over the last couple of weeks. And another incredible thing that Howard Kotler did for the Everson was that upon his death, he endowed the Everson with an endowment, which still exists today that is meant to purchase and support the work of young artists. And so many, many of the contemporary pieces in our collection have come through Howard's generosity. So I think of Howard every day, not just from the pieces that are in the Everson, which I'll talk about, but because of the legacy that he left the Everson, and Judith Schwartz has had a big part in that. So I wanted to mention that there is an upcoming auction for Surf Plus, the Craft Emergency Relief Fund. The date on here is wrong, and it's been pushed back to later in June. So if you know of pieces to donate for this auction, I believe they're still accepting a choice few pieces for this auction. But it is going for a great cause. Artists from residency programs that I have run have been the recipients of the Craft Emergency Relief Fund, and now is an incredibly important time to support this bit of private infrastructure for the craft world. So you can find the Surf Plus auction online. There's an incredible flipbook. And I'm happy to say that Paul Cattula and the estate has donated two pieces. So if you do not own a Howard Kotler, this is your chance to both own a Howard Kotler and to support an incredibly worthy cause. Paul, would you like to say anything about these two pieces?
Well, this particular piece is called "The Limits of Mediation", which, you know, in law is a way of diverting, going to court. And so in this particular piece, I know I had a long conversation with Jeffrey Spahn, because he didn't quite get it, and it's been unfolding. Like, certain pieces of Howard's continue to fuel me with ideas. But in here, who is the mediator of this dispute between two people? It's actually the viewer of the work. And you're looking at heads and tails that aren't coming together. I think that one of the things that Howard was also very fascinated with was the idea of these windows and looking into windows. I'm questioning if these could be windows into people's homes or windows such as video booths or something else. But the idea too with the mediator is, once you know something, it cannot be used in a court, in a legal case. The other image, which is called Vanity, is an image of Pope Paul VI. And one of the things to remember is all of these decals were things that were mass-produced commercially. And so many people had the image of Pope Paul VI in their home, and he had great respect for all human life. Really pivotal Pope in Catholic history. And one thing to note, in 1965, again, he gave a speech which said, "No more war, war never again. It is peace, peace which must guide the destinies of peoples and all mankind." He was a pope from 1963 to 1978. In 1976, there were accusations of his homosexuality. There was a writer named Roger Pryfleit, who had written two books, which began to explore this. And then there was also an interview that was published in a French magazine and elicited these kinds of speculations about the pope. I'm not sure if Howard had access to this information or suspected it. The interesting thing is the pope is made white to think that he is this kind of virgin. But what remains in the image is the eyes, the ears, and the mouth. And so it could be hear no speak, no say, no.
And I also want to interject right now. Jeffrey Spahn just posted the auction dates, which are June 19th to 28th, and that auction will actually be held on eBay. I want to encourage everybody to chime in via the group chat. So say hello from wherever you are. And I also wanted to say, with so many people who have direct stories and knowledge of Howard, either feel free to call us out on something that we say that might be bullshit, because sometimes there is, I think, truthiness in the Howard Kotlervers, but also to share your own stories, your own memories, and your own questions. I think there are so many people that love Howard that if we opened this up as sort of a free-for-all, that we would be here for days and days. But lodge your questions, your questions or your memories on the chat, and I will do my best to help bring them up as we're zipping through. Very quickly, I'm going to show my own Howard Kotler. So it's amazing, and it is one of my prized possessions as a collector and curator. This came from an exhibition that was at the Clay Studio in Philadelphia. And of course, Jeff Guido, who was the creative director at that time at the Clay Studio, had longstanding ties to Howard and the estate. And as director, he was able to help bring in this exhibition. And Paul, were you involved in this exhibition, which would have been in 19, or I'm sorry, 2006 or '07?
Yeah, I'm trying to trace this history. I had to be, because I had the estate at that point. Yeah.
So it was an incredible exhibition just of the dinner plates, and I was able to select this. And little did I know at the time that I was on a collision course with the Clay Studio and would eventually become a curator there myself, which led me on my path eventually to the Everson. Okay, so I'm going to stop sharing my screen now, and we're going to look at some actual objects. So with Judy's help in a moment, we're going to take you through Howard's history. Of course, Howard was born in Cleveland, and Cleveland keeps coming up as an incredible mecca of the ceramics world. He showed in the May shows at the Cleveland Museum of Art, and he followed in the footsteps of many of the talented and, I think, deeply unique artists that came out of Cleveland. So I'm going to put on my museum gloves here and respect the art. The little cotton gloves that we have are a little bit too tiny for my hands, so I'm using these ripper gloves instead. But this piece is probably going to come as a little bit of a surprise to a lot of people who know Howard for his more picant topical work. But this is a piece that dates to the late 1950s, and I believe maybe from a period that he worked and studied on a Fulbright in Finland, or at least it was right around that time.
Did it at Ohio State.
Okay.
Entered it at the Cleveland, Big Cleveland Show at the museum, and unfortunately won first prize and had to make 1,200 of them. And it was his nemesis. So when I saw him, he was still casting them. He thought he would never finish. It solved him totally from ever being a production potter.
That is amazing. So all hail this beautiful cat from the late 1950s. The textures are really amazing on it, but it is slip cast. And as Judy said, it was part of a much larger period or body of work that he hadn't intended. So I'm going to jump forward, and I will say that upon Howard's death, Judy and the estate helped make these pieces available to the Everson. And we're able to jump in because of that work that was donated. We have work from each decade. And I'm going to show you the piece Butterfly Lips from 1966. And I'm going to invite Paul and Judy to join in on this. But this is Egyptian paste, so the ceramic itself has glaze-like qualities. And when it is taken up to a high enough temperature, the material begins to melt and move. And so this is 1966. The new ceramic presence had been published about six years earlier. But there is a softness about this piece and an experimental quality about this piece that I think is very much a part of what young artists are doing today. But again, I want to stress that this piece was 1966. And I want to stress that the surface of this piece is a lot different than pieces that we would associate with funk art. I think that the form and the fact that it looked so manipulated and touched by fingers and hands connects it to a lot of that, but it's quite distinctive and I think, you know, something else entirely. Paul, I wanted to invite you, if you had any thoughts on this piece and the way that it relates to sort of Howard's emerging worldview.
Well, the obvious sexuality is there, and I think that's the wonderful thing, you know, in looking through all of Howard's work is his ability to really fear not sexuality, whether it's male or female or a combination of the two. And I think in this particular body of work, I know that he was very fascinated with color. And so the use of the Egyptian paste was a material in which he could begin to explore the color. And there's somebody that's here today in the audience, Kathy Dombach, who was a student at Ohio State University during Howard's time as a PhD candidate. And she's, I don't know if she could turn on her mic, but she talks, there was an artist that came in from Egypt, I guess, a painter, and somehow began working in the studios. And that's how that affinity for Egyptian paste emerged at that early point in his career.
Yes, I would verify that. Judy, I don't know if you were there at that time. I know you were.
I was.
Yeah, down in the basement, where we all were. But he sort of easily took ideas from everybody, anything that was around him. And do you remember that he was a PhD student from Egypt, who was financed by the government of Egypt to come up with Egyptian style. He was a painter, actually, but came down to the ceramics area and started playing with Egyptian paste. And that's really where Howard first saw and began to experiment. Or, I mean, actually, it was later. It was after Howard left that he used that information then with the Egyptian paste. But as a painter, the PhD student was using it because of all the colors and the way in which he could manipulate it. So I thought that was an interesting way in which, you know, I saw Howard sort of taking ideas from anything that was around him freely and openly.
Go ahead, Judy.
I was going to say that you're absolutely right. He took the ideas, but then he ran with it in directions that were totally his own. And I wanted to say something about Egyptian paste. It's inherent in the quality of the material that the glaze is actually in the clay. It's not on the surface. And because of that, Howard was able, in his own way, to explore the sensuality of the material by stretching and pulling it. I mean, those lips, those blue lips, they are so sexy. And it is because it is Egyptian paste. It's not sitting on the surface. The surface is as sensuous as you could get. And so he might, I remember that I was there in '60, and Howard was just starting his doctorate then. And I do remember I was in the basement of Hayes Hall. Howard eked out a space for me. I was not a matriculated student. I'll tell you a little bit about that then and how he opened doors for me. But he not only took from people, but he incorporated it in such a way that made it more expansive, more illuminating, and built on his vast, undeniably love for history, ceramic history and just art history generally.
For sure.
All right. So I'm going to have to keep us moving on a little bit, and I'm going to show the next piece chronologically in the Everson's collection, which is one of his plate sets from the American Gothic series. And this is an absolute treasure. As someone who, you know, sort of has come up in ceramics admiring Howard Kotler, I'd always seen photos and seen pictures, but getting to actually handle these plate sets and see the amount of detail that Howard lavished upon them is one of the greatest gifts that I can imagine and one of the most fulfilling things about being a curator here. I will also say that this American Gothic set has particular poignance for this moment in time as well, and I'll talk about that in a moment. So it is a wooden box that Howard had constructed. And for those of you who are not sort of deep in the Howard Kotlervers, having things fabricated, you know, became very commonplace for Howard. And he began to even sort of play with the sort of fabrication of ideas and the group sourcing of ideas, which we'll talk about in a little bit. But there's a plaque in the front of the case. And the case is filled with, I believe, the four plates that are inside in each of the individual plate. So I hope that this is as big of a treat. It can't be as big of a treat for those of you who are out there in TV land as it is for me. But getting to actually see the pouches and see things unpacked, I think, is incredible. So each of the leather pouches that the pieces come in come with their own plaques, which are reproductions of the pieces which are inside. They're finished with incredible upholstery details, like the stitching and the leather-covered button that's on the back. And Judy can probably speak to some of those decisions. You can see the quality of fabric, the satin that he's choosing for the inside.
He had a craftsman who knew what they were doing. Make it for him. That's why it looks so good.
They were.
Himself.
They were, they were made by Barbara Patel.
Exactly.
Calls herself Jessie Karn Silk or Shiva. I can't remember all her names, but she made all those pieces.
So I think that's Irv Tepper, who's also on this call, and Irv was a fairly early student of Howard's. And thank you for joining us, Irv. So this piece is called "The Silent White Majority", which, of course, during the Nixon era was the theory that there was a silent majority of Americans with conservative values that was not being reflected in our leadership or the way that the country was run. And so sort of insidious coded messaging, I think, that Kotler was picking up on this. I could get out all of the plates, but I'm going to have to move along as well, because the next piece is something that is especially near and dear to my heart. So Judy, I'm about to bring over "The Old Bag Next Door Is Nuts". Would you like to introduce it to us and talk about the particular iteration that we're about to look at?
Okay.
Before you do so, I just wanted to point out the interior of that bag is Moray, which is a fabric that looks like wood grain. I just think it's very, he just chose materials so smartly.
And this thing smells great, everybody. I mean, still, still has that incredible carpentry craftsman smell.
I also think how clever it is that it's all housed in a box that keeps it all safe, like safekeeping, you know, a treasure, a treasure chest. Anyway, the old bag next door was probably, you all probably know the history of it. It was Howard's wonderful post-modernist concept of appropriation, long before it was fashionable. And he, he, he did what Duchamp did and did it even better, because it was, this is a piece in which he won first prize. I don't know the show. Do you know the show?
So there was an exhibition of Trump Lloyd works, and it was featured in that exhibition, which was then written about in Ceramics Monthly. And I can't remember where the exhibition.
But he won first prize, and Ruth Poris, who was an ex-nun, wrote a letter to the editor. And she said that she was really mortified, horrified, that someone who used a Duncan mold of this Victorian home and then put the facade on the bag next door and then used that mold. He did not fabricate it himself. He usurped it. He stole it. Some of the language, I don't think she used the word stole, but that was her implication. And that the piece should never win a prize like that, because after all, he did not actually make it. So it went back and forth with everybody chiming in in the craft world, fabulous letters back and forth. Even I wrote a letter to support him. And then finally, after two years, Howard wrote a letter to the editor.
I've actually got that letter here, and I could read at least a portion from the letter.
I just love the part that you have to read, that, "Yes, I am a sinner." I just loved that he started off saying, "Yes, I am a sinner," because he knew she was an ex-nun. So that was very important to him. Go ahead, read it.
Let's see. "I am a sinner. I have plagiarized from everyone in my sculpture. The old bag next door is nuts. The Victorian house mold, artist unknown. Sold by Duncan Ceramics Product was cast at Lloyd's Ceramics and Pottery of Seattle. The nuts were cast from another Duncan mold, artist unknown. The bag mold was made from a real paper bag, artist unknown. One of my former students, Valu Olivera. The ceramic decals were made by Tim Hall of Seattle, and the plexiglass box was made by Continental Industries of Seattle. Even the title, I must confess, is not my own, but the brainstorm of two students, Michael Lucero and Alice Sunstrom. In fact, the only element that's mine is the concept for the sculpture. Hopefully, Ms. Poris will permit me this one small glory. I have revealed all. I am born again. Hallelujah. And if you say, Ms. Poris, our cultural, and if, as you say, Ms. Poris, our cultural heritage has come from honest artists, then I feel washed clean, and I can walk in that golden path of honesty and integrity in my art. Hopefully, I can keep on this true road, but if I go astray, I feel certain that there will be the timeless touch of thousands like you, Ms. Poris, who will come to my rescue and turn me from the evils of craft."
Well, I have to say that it's that word, for me, the significant concept, that you would allow me this one small thing, and that is the. would allow me this one small thing, and that is the concept of the piece. If that isn't Duchampian, I don't know what is. The concept is everything. And of course, being the postmodernist that he was, isn't that a forerunner of what we have today as well? So, I mean, it's way ahead of his time.
In so many ways.
As it used to be. It's a gorgeous piece.
Yeah, many of you are in the back.
Prize piece in my collection. It looks pretty damn good there.
So I will say, you know, we are in the Eversons I Am Pay building, and I'm right underneath an incredible skylight that, this is an odd sunny day in Syracuse, and the sun is sort of streaming down and giving the sort of bisque white a glorious glow. There was, I should also point out that, like most of Howard's pieces, there were multiple iterations of this piece, at least two, if not more. And the one, the other one that I know of actually has a wood grain pattern over the entire piece.
That's, you know, that's what he loved to do, was mix up pattern and mix up materials and change things up, alter things around. And so when he did variations on a theme, it was always based on a change of pattern, color, whatever. I have to say, this format, while you go get the next piece, is so fabulous. It's not academic, in a sense. It's anecdotal, which makes these stories and with this collection of people who knew Howard, it just goes to show how we all touch each other's lives in various parts, which make us not know maybe the whole elephant, but parts of it. But when we all put it together, you know, we get sort of a fuller picture of the human being. And I'm so happy for this Goth, I can't tell you, because he was, as you say, he was not only instrumental in my life, he was mentor. It was because of him that I wrote my book, Confrontational Clay. It was because of him that I set aside, I have to tell you that he did not like to write. He was not a writer, and he always asked me to edit a lot of the things for him. And so we had a symbiotic relationship, you know? That's what friends are for, that's what marriages are about, relationships are about, friends helping each other. And Howard came to every one of my family events. He was more than a friend, he was a family member. He was at my 40th birthday party, he was at my 25th wedding anniversary, and he flew, he loved to come into New York. I'm not gonna say he came just to see me, because he really loved, you know, Broadway shows, and we would go to the theater, and we would then have dinner, and then he'd just explore the gay life in New York. So I was no competition for that. But I was so delighted that I lived in New York, because when he moved to Seattle, it was a pioneer kind of town. He never felt really comfortable in Seattle. Seattle is not then what it is now. I mean, it's lively, it's musical, it's, you know, it's opened up. But Seattle then was rough and ready, and it just never suited Howard. So he scooted down to San Francisco quite often, and then came to New York quite often.
Marge Levy is on the call, and she can attest to that evolution within Seattle, and she's been leaving some great comments. I'm grateful for that. So I actually brought out one last piece, but it is too large for a curator to sort of handle and be trusted with by himself. And maybe I'll just turn the camera a little bit, but this is Ladybug Pot, 1987. So it has these granulated surfaces. We're gonna see some images that are related to Ladybug Pot, vibrant colors, lots of different variations in the glaze, obvious references to sort of anatomy in it as well. And we'll dig into some of those influences of the body and art deco and queer culture as we go along. So I'm gonna ask Judy in a moment to screen share, and she has really put together an incredible treat for me and the rest of the people on this call. And Paul and I both got a glimpse into the depth of how amazing her photography collection is. And Judy has done the work that a lot of people promise they're going to do, and that is that she spent years digitizing her slide collection, and they're immaculately organized. And it's great that we have a full-length volume about Howard Kotler, the book Face to Face, but some other publication needs to happen. And I know that Judy has a lot of the material that is going to make that possible someday. Paul, would you like to chime in about anything before we start jumping into Judy's presentation?
I think we should jump right in.
Okay. So Judy, go ahead and share your screen, and we can both comment while you're showing your images. I encourage everybody to go to presenter view and also to go full screen with your computer.
Oh, are you seeing it now?
Not yet. So go ahead and click on that bottom Share Screen green button. There you go.
Okay, great. You're bringing, kicking and moaning into the 21st century, so.
Great.
My, forgive my old non-computer ways. I really enjoyed putting this together. I spent the whole day yesterday, but it brought back wonderful memories for me. I have to say also, Goth, you just mentioned about face-to-face, but I'm also gonna hold up this book that Pat Failing wrote. And what I love about this conversation is that I can fill you in with little details. And I have to say that Howard was incredibly clever in knowing how museums and how artists' reputations are made. I don't think he got as much recognition in his lifetime as he did in his death. And in 89, when he died, he was just really pushing onto the really large-scale, wonderful work that nobody really knew about, and wasn't that well advertised and promoted. But he was very smart, because in the last six months of his life, as he was dying from lung cancer, we commissioned, it was his idea, of course, that he didn't write well, but he had, he did keep copious notes, and he commissioned Pat Failing to interview him during those last six months. And it was those interviews that she was able to base that book. And I think that was just marvelous. The second thing that he did, which was just fantastic, is that he wasn't gonna wait around for artists, for museums to collect his work. So we gathered all of the works that he did, and we put them in slides, we photographed everything, and we selected 10 museums that would each get 10 pieces each, one at least from, or a few from each decade of his life. So he only really worked 30 years. So that's why, when Goth is showing you his collection, he's showing you works that come from a range of Howard's work, which his entire life's work. And then in addition to that, when we sold everything, his house, his collections, we had the money then to also give money gifts to each of the museums to maintain the collection and to photograph it. So every museum got hundreds, thousands of dollars to maintain the collection. And after, this was all over from the Seattle Art Museum and the Eversin, the MAD Museum, they all thought that this was the most generous and wonderful idea that an artist could do for them, not wait for collectors who. Anyway, I just wanted to get that point across. I was hoping I was gonna do a little essay about this and go into this in more detail, because as museums are hurting now, and I don't think they're gonna be having money to be buying lots of work, I think it's a great legacy for artists to think about. Okay, so this first, I wanted to give you a little potpourri of Howard here, and his mom and dad here. I do have to say, without, I mean, it's a part of Howard's personality. His mom was a manic depressive, and she suffered badly, certainly during the depressive states that made Howard rather depressed. But during her obsessive states, manic states, it made his life quite miserable. He was a very devoted son and would get very caught up in her illness. He has a sister who lives here on the East Coast in Connecticut, and a little anecdote there is that when he came to visit one day, he went over to her and collected some of the early pots that he gave her, brought them back here, and then took a hammer to them. And only because, I said, "Howard, how could you be destroying your own work?" And he said, "I don't want things that I'm really not totally proud to live anymore." And he just cracked them up. And his sister had still had lots of good work, but isn't that fantastic that he would, you know, crack up his own pieces because he wants to make sure that what does remain is what he really wanted us to see? Here's a picture of Howard with Harry Soviak. And those of you who might be on board, who went to Cranbrook and know him during his Cranbrook days, Howard met Harry Soviak there at that time. Harry was a fantastic painter. And Harry and I also became quite friendly with each other, and when I had my parties, he lived in, he got a job teaching in Philadelphia, and he would come here as well. I hope Mark Burns recognizes himself here. And although he doesn't quite look like that, well, none of us do. And here's Patty Warshene and Bob Sperry. So Howard went to Seattle in 19, wait, 1966, and became professor there. That's the infamous picture. We're gonna talk about his use of his profile. Howard was vain, you know? He had a great, wonderful sense of himself, but not in an egotistical way, but in, well, we'll talk about silhouettes when we go on. And I wanted to show you this poster for the decal plate show when he did The Last Supper and himself as an Arab, which he loved to dress up. I think Irv remembers his two suits. He had a black suit and a white suit. And with, you know, he was a great collector of Art Nouveau jewelry as well, and he had the most fabulous stick pins. Anyway, I wanted to show you these last two pictures. This one in his studio was taken a couple of months before he died. And this was at the opening of his show at the Bellevue Art Center. Okay, moving right along. I don't know if Martha Vida's on board, but I would be remiss not to show you Howard's three back stamps, and that's from the Marx Project. Had it not been for them to come over and photograph these, I actually would have not have paid much attention, but I do now. And so the HK, the Kotler spelling his first name was his first signature, and then he went to HK, and then he only used the decal in platinum when he did the plates. I took a view of his living room. I wanted to show you his influences. Wonderful Mark Burns piece, I think it's called Saint Venus Dance. Mark, you can correct me. This is a painting here by Harry Soviak, the man that I told you he met, a gay man that he met at Cranbrook, which I think was a great relationship, a great friendship. And this sofa, the Art Deco, the waterfall concept, and the lamp is, of course, deco, the table, the use of shiny surfaces, all deco. This is a Rochester, upstate New York, I think, Goth, in your territory, Rochester plate. And I think Irv might know who these two works are, but anyway, that's the, that's the living room.
And we talked a little bit on a call yesterday with Paul about the popularity of art deco within the queer community and some of the kind of coded messages, I think, and code switching that got to happen via that imagery. Paul, do you wanna chime in about that at all?
I just wanted to say, in Detroit, if you were gay and had any kind of money, you would have owned something art deco. Your place would be furnished in art deco. And there is a area in Detroit called Palmer Park, which has incredible art deco apartments in which the gay population had lived there then. It moved after a while, but it was very popular to go into all of these apartments, beautiful apartments, and they were beautifully appointed with all art deco furniture and other objects.
And art deco really bloomed nationally toward the late 60s and into the 70s, but I think, you know, it's important to predate, point out how much this predates that explosion.
You know, art deco was not a term used until the 60s. It came from the 1924 Paris Expo of Decorative, and they shortened it to Art Deco, which, from decorative arts. And Howard fell in love with it. It's all part of his highbrow, lowbrow discourse, and Noritaki was lowbrow. But he learned so much from Noritaki. As I said, he studied history in such great detail that he really paid attention. So for example, we're gonna see later on, this is a direct piece, a piece that he directly copied from. He also, this is a Frank Lloyd Wright plate, that Frank Lloyd Wright had the Noritaki Company design, and they manufactured. And if you look closely, you see these acid colors, the bright palette, the wonderful juxtaposition of geometric shape that is going to carry us through the rest of this work. This is the other side of that room, and it's the same vase here. This is a cheese dish, et cetera. Now, I wanted to also talk about the fact that Howard was an historian, and the Noritaki Company, I'm gonna hold up this catalog. This is a catalog that the Smithsonian did that toured 150 pieces. He had 600 pieces in his collection. And they chose 150 pieces that toured in this catalog. And Howard actually named many of these pieces, Daisy, and all kinds of wonderful names, because Howard really had a penchant for language and for wonderful punning. And so his use of language, he named all these things. And to this day, the Noritaki Society, which I now am a founding member, because it formed right after Howard died, they still use that, those names. So I wanted to show you. Now, Howard not only collected Noritaki, by the way, this was designed on West 23rd Street here in Manhattan, and the designers took the motifs from popular magazines, Vogue Magazine and Women's Day, and they were looking at what women were looking at. So that's a study in itself. And in fact, this is an article that I wrote for Ceramic, American Ceramics, and I go into great detail about how they designed Noritaki. Let's see, it's from American Ceramics, volume nine dash one. Anyway, let's go on. I wanted then to show you other influences. And Irv, do you know who these guys were? This is in Seattle, I think, but this is Howard's love of Hawaiian shirts. Again, panels of fabulous color and pattern that Howard just adored, and he loved wearing them. He was very short and small in demeanor, and consequently, and he always wore black t-shirts. To me, it always gave him a very boyish, young look, and he moved around very quickly. When he did put on a Hawaiian shirt, it was always in the service of feeling happy and a mood swing. There's something else I wanted to share, and it was meant, it was, of course, focused on in the book Face to Face, but Howard was very, when I met him, very closeted. And I was this balabuster from New York when I came to Ohio State in 1960. I was all of 17. He loved anything that came from New York. He loved anything that came from New York, I think. So we hit it off really well from the beginning. But he was very concerned about being found out. And you have to think about what life was like for, for the gay community in, in that period. And he was hoping or fearing that he would never get a job. So he stayed closeted. I wanted to show you this brick that Robert Arneson sent Howard after Howard taught a semester at Davis. Howard was pretty devastated by receiving that brick from Arneson. And this is a, this was taken from Howard's original piece of paper. It's located in the book, Pat Phaling's book of his original handwriting. But it's rather poignant, I think, you know, playing on his name being weird and how weird is Howard? And weird, anyway, I think it adds a dimension to him. He loved to travel. This is when we all were at the World Craft Council in Japan in nineteen seventy-seven. That's Marie Wu and Patty Warshene and myself. I don't know if anyone can recognize the man. He lives in Georgia. I just lost, I just forgot his name. And as I said, Howard came to New York quite often. And we always went to the Frumpkin Gallery because it had so much of West Coast ceramics there and Arneson as well. And it was because of Howard that I, as I said, I, I wrote my dissertation and I'm going to get at that in a moment. So I'm going to go through this very quickly. I don't, I don't want to be taking up too much time. Please, Paul and Goth charm in, but this is what he did as an undergraduate. He majored as an optometrist and hated it. It was what his parents wanted him to do. And the last semester, he touched clay, like we hear so many stories, and it changed his life. This is the cat that you showed Goth, but then another version. He got tired of doing the one on the left and then went to the middle one. The Cleveland Show was a major, a major showing for craft and certainly ceramics. Ohio was incredibly rich state for Ohio red clay. I mean, that's why we have so many potteries there, why the American Ceramic Society, the engineering society is there and Seeker's Birth was there. When I got out there, the faculty, unlike, not unlike Alfred, had five full-time faculty teaching just ceramics. We had Littleton teaching mold, glaze calculation. We had Fetzer teaching the wheel. We had a mold maker. We had just a throw, you know, just specialties. But the most important person was Carlton Atherton. And Atherton taught way before the time. I don't know if they had it at Alfred. I know Goth, you went there, but, oh yeah, Margaret Carney. But before that, someone who just taught aesthetics and history of ceramics. And Howard adored Carlton Atherton. And because of Howard, Carlton shared many of his notes for teaching aesthetics and art history, ceramic history with me. His MA thesis was on the wasted cylinder, which is taken from fourteenth, fifteenth century Italian apothecary jars. Howard often talked about the body of the pot in this master's thesis. The wide shoulder, the narrow waist, that when they're sitting on a shelf, the apothecary, the pharmacist could reach in and pull the, the bottle off the, off the shelf. I think you can see Howard's immaculate throwing technique, definitely a style. But you know, he, he only took one class as an undergraduate. And then, yes, took a year for his MA, but it wasn't an MFA. And so when he got a scholarship to go to get an MFA, which today is still the prize, you know, terminal degree, he met Maya Grotell, whose work is on the right. And they really hit it off. And I think it was Maya who introduced him to deco. And you can see the influence of Tashiko Takiezu in the middle. And that I think is Howard's work. It is Howard's work on the left and in the middle. But you can see the influence that Maya had on him because it just didn't seem to be Howard's style. Then he got a Fulbright to the Arabia Factory in Finland, which was associated with this fabulous school. And the Arabia Factory unfortunately has since closed. It was a fabulous, fabulous factory for making fine Finnish-designed dishes. Because of Howard, I ended up buying tons and tons of Arabia dinnerware. And you can see the influence of Scandinavian, the Reed Pot on Howard. But here now, look at the textures. And this is when he really started, when he came back to Ohio State, he really got involved with texture. And just like the Egyptian paste that we talked about. And he loved the idea of exploring what that material could do for his ideas. Here, he rolled the slabs into corn cob, plenty of corn in Ohio. And he would come in and grind it up and roll it into the clay. And of course, knowing full well that the pot marks would be left when there was a burnout in the kiln. Not going to go into these now and any kind of other aesthetic. But I wanted also bring out the idea, this particular pot, this is part of his thesis. He had many ideas for his PhD thesis, but this was the abstract expressionist period in his life. But even then, look, he used fabric, a brocade. And just like Paul mentioned about him caring about the moray pattern on that silk that went inside the lining, he cared about, instead of decorating this, he glued fabric. And this fabric is still glued to this day. I have it by my bedside. It's still not, one thing has come off of it. But I want to talk a little bit about this abstract expressionist period in his life. Vulcus was playing a big part in all of our lives. Everyone at Ohio State hated Vulcus for what he was doing to craft because he wasn't doing what you should be doing to clay. And Howard tried to embrace abstract expressionism, but it really wasn't his thing. He was refined. He liked detail, just like we mentioned in the plates and the, and, and getting the precise information about, everything counts. And so he tried his hand. He got a PhD thesis out of this fabulous exploration, but he moved on. And he moved on to these Egyptian paste. And I too love this series. This is the, he did a number of these twists, chalices, and they were all Egyptian paste. And Marge, you might be interested in knowing that the day after Howard died, a couple of days later, I was still in Howard's house. Because I was within the last few weeks of his life. And Dale Chihouli knocks at the door. And as you know, he loves to buy things in collections. He doesn't buy one thing at a time. He likes full sweep of things. And he wanted all of Howard's chalices. And we just bought all twelve of them that we had there at the house.
Judy, I wanted to ask a little bit about Howard's, you've talked about the fact that he was not a great lover of putting his work down in writing. I was curious, particularly during this period, when he was talking about his work and ceramic work, how earnest he was or not. Did he, could he get heavy in talking about his work? Or did he just sort of, I don't know, wear his work with a kind of lightness as an artist and let other people do the talking?
He was dead serious talking about his work. And when, I think some of his students, you know, I, you know, I was also a student. I was only all of seventeen when I met him. I was just there because I followed my husband out to Ohio State who was working on his doctorate. I'd already had a year at Queens College and painting. But when I met Howard and met clay, it was like, you know, a light bulb went off, like for so many of us. And so he, he was ruthless. He, you know, what are you doing that for? Questioning, questioning, what are you doing? Practice, go back. And I think Irv and Mark and Michael LaSalle, they all can attest that he was, he didn't talk much, but he really was pointed in what he said. And he would give scathing critiques. I think he was very smart. He didn't write things down. You know, it's a skill and an art to use, to use language well.
And I wanted, I'm sorry, I just wanted to interject very quickly. When I was, I don't know, a very young curator, the first exhibition that I curated was at the Museum of Contemporary Craft in Portland. And so I got the run of their archives. And Howard had an early exhibition at that venue. And his correspondence was so, I don't know, buttoned down and professional. And there was some sort of accident or something that led to him having to put the show off. And he was so apologetic. And it was a bit of a revelation to, to see that correspondence from, from him and see how seriously he took his career.
He printed all of his letters and all of his letters. I had archives of all the letters that he wrote to friends and archives of letters that were written back to him. He was very precise about behaving well and behaving professional. He had the utmost impeccable reputation for being a really meticulous in that regard.
Okay, so Judy.
I just want to, yeah, thank you. Just go, go back to that slide. Just to say that those, that's Raku and Egyptian paste. There, he was working in two different ways at this particular point.
This is, this is Raku, you're right.
Raku and one. And then the other thing is, I mentioned it yesterday when we were in a conversation, the image on the lower right, which is called a wing double bottle. There are times within Howard's work where I see reference, potential reference to Jim's Meltred work. Sometimes it's very direct. But Jim Meltred had created a couple of bottle forms prior to the Emphasus Lake Pot. And one of them was this winged bottle. And I'm not sure if perhaps Howard had seen that bottle exhibited in San Francisco or not. But there is a certain kind of reference to that form on the lower right.
Great. Okay, well, you've already, well, okay. So now we're going to get into the appropriation of materials, other materials, mixed media. I think now you're beginning to see the luster glazes and the gold that came from Norotaki. The use of decals since Norotaki was all decal, picking up from those. But of course, the titles of these pieces, the, the, the reference to vaginas and to orifices and anuses, et cetera, and all these slang words that you could possibly have for anything sexual of how you would deal with the, with, with the sex. So, I mean, hole grabber and muff pot. And when these came out, they caused a sensation. I'm still amazed and thrilled actually because he really walked down a road that nobody was walking down in clay to this extent. I mean, Gilhuli maybe, but he was too much of a Scientologist to go down this far. You know what I mean? He really, Howard was outrageous and he loved to be outrageous. And, and then looked to see if anyone was paying attention. So I think that these are just caused a great stir. But I'm still amazed, I was talking to Jeffrey Spahn the other night, and he told me that there's a young, there's a whole new generation that is just thrilled with Howard's work. They can't get enough of him. So I'm going to move on now. Goth, I think I'm talking too much, but I'm going to really move a little faster here. You've already shown your piece that you had with the lettuce leaves. And again, with this obvious phallic symbol and the balls, fabulous colors. Here we're getting, this is the pot I showed you, the deco pot, the Norotaki vase. And this is a direct copy of that. And inside, when I show you my collection, I'm going to show you the maquette to this piece. His love of deco, of course mimicking Radio City Music Hall, the use of luster here. This is gold luster here, the surfaces, the glazed surfaces. He used commercially prepared glazes, again, ahead of his time and appropriated. I wanted to show you, this was in the site show. This is a Norotaki salt and pepper shaker. And obviously you can see that strong geometric love and pattern that he took right from that. I wanted to show you this piece because this is how the pieces were assembled. So here's this fabulous stand with this base, which fit perfectly underneath this blue. So this whole section lifted up and sat down on this black piece. But he even glazed the back piece, the black piece, so that if it came disassembled, you would see that he cared enough that the inside that nobody would ever see was glazed. And then this long phallic piece, penis shape with balls, sat, sits on top here as a stopper. So then I wanted to show you the next piece where he might have gotten this idea from. These are the Norotaki perfume bottles, where the porcelain stopper of the doubler that you put under each ear would fit into this opening, this crevice here, this opening. And I want to just point out, if you're researching for the wild Norotaki, as Howard would call it, because he loved the flea markets and searched for it everywhere. And all of us, all his students, all his faculty, everybody was searching for Howard. We were always going out looking for Howard to build up his collection. So this is the more, the M for the Moore and Moore brothers. This is the back stamp with Norotaki across the top and then made in Japan. And this is the back stamp, the red back stamp, and they had a green one. And when they, this is the import to America. And when they imported to England, the M went into a spider. And so it was a difference, they could distinguish it. Again, I wanted to show you more of the use of paisley and the decal and the lettuce, again, with that same shape. I have this piece on the right inside in my collection and I'll show you. More of the same in terms of relevance to Norotaki. And now we're going to get to the cup in the mold concept. And this is a whole dissertation in and of itself. The idea of taking from industry, what would normally be a release from the mold, Howard encapsulated, kept in the mold. And the titles, again, were incredibly important. The one here on the left is called Bushel in a Peck. And the use of contact paper, decal, mixed media, the impossibility of a mold being wood, but really being plaster. And then the bird even being wood and then the cup and the whole thing camouflaged. So that, I mean, what a play and mix-up of pattern.
Paul, I would invite you to chime in too. And I'd also like to kind of point out the fact that Howard was using contact paper and was using some decals that were unfired. And he has both an incredible sort of eye for and attention to micro detail. But then there also was a bit of a sort of wanton use of materials that makes registrars and conservators a little bit crazy in this day and age. Paul, would you like to talk?
Can I throw something in?
Yes, who is that?
Mark.
Mark, please.
The piece on the left, I made half of that piece.
Okay.
Got a bit surprised.
And it, it's not contact paper. Liza and Larry Howerson made those wood decals for him. The bird is the most interesting thing. He came to me and borrowed my bird. He came to me and borrowed my bird mold. And the first thing he made, he brought it back to me. And the bird was just sort of perched on the rim of the cup. And he said, what do you think? And I said, it doesn't look right. It doesn't have any legs. And he said, I didn't know birds had legs. So he took it back and I remade it. I wanted to give a shout out, there are people here, Howard had one other great talent. He could spot talent. And many hands touched many of the things that you've shown.
That's right.
Yes.
And he would come to you, I did a lot of the color work on the pots. I have a big Royal Paisley pot of my own. And I would sit in his office and write down color schemes. I draw little pictures.
Same as title, same with title, Mark.
Say what?
The same with titles.
Yes.
I titled a lot of them.
Thank you, Erv, it's lovely to see you.
Good to see you too.
He, he was shameless about it.
Yeah.
And, and, and Judy, thank you for, the shout out to the many students who filled his Norotaki and later, uh, the Japanese dog knickknacks. He had hundreds of eyes. We were all taught to look for the hallmarks. So we get the good ones. And he knew we could get them for nothing.
Unfortunately, I, I have now 1,200 pieces of Norotaki. And I don't know what to do with.
I'll give you some of them.
To me, these are the really interesting things about him, um, was his ability to sort of ringmaster this circus of people. And he had really astonishing people at his disposal to work for him. So I thought you might, I thought you might enjoy that little story about the bird because it's one of the funniest things I ever heard.
You know.
I didn't know birds had legs. What did they look like?
I think it's very clear when we talked about the, uh, old bag next door is nuts.
Yes.
How much Howard admitted in that. And that won him such acclaim. And I think it was almost the starting point of collaboration in ways that he never dreamt possible. And let's, you are absolutely right. He told me that most of the pieces, the titles, the people that had working for him, it's not unlike Jeff Koons today, right? I mean, it all.
Oh, exactly. The, the, the mold series, I'll give you a little. I'll give you a little, I'll give you a little anecdote about that. The, when he started the mold series, he took a trip with Ann Courier and I to San Francisco. That's one reset with front seat and his underpants because it was hot. And, um, he was afraid they wouldn't let him into California because they asked if there were fruits or nuts in the car. And he got out a notebook and said, I own that. I painted the gun. He produced a little notebook and said, give me ideas. So many, many of these mold pieces were thought up and named by Ann and myself.
Ann Perrigo.
Yes, Ann Courier.
Area.
Ann Courier.
Area.
Mark, I wanted to ask you, you know, I know that, um, in this, in this particular series of cups, you know, there is the precious cup, there's pre-cup. So there's an obvious nod to Jim Meltred's A's. It was he, but there's something about the overall cup series that I think is really fascinating for me. It's only one half of the mold.
Yes.
It's the male half.
Yes.
If you look at, and I'm curious, did he make that decision to use that half of the mold? You know, because it has the po-, it has the positive keys.
I think he was always aware of the joke he was making about, um, casting was cheating. You have to remember at the time, a lot of this stuff was made, you weren't supposed to be doing any of this stuff.
That's right.
Right.
And so what, what he was doing there was thumbing his nose, which he, he loved to do.
Exactly.
And I think that this gave him a chance to tell people that he was simply going to do whatever he wanted to do.
And I think the other thing too is in the, excuse me, Judy, in a lot of this work and even in the plates, like you do see a range of subject matter. So I'm curious if that's coming from, let's say, his students or outside, like where? Because sometimes it's, you know, high camp or it's just a one liner and then other times it's very serious. And so how is?
I could talk about the plates quite a bit.
Okay, I'm just, and then, you know, I'd know, Erv, you chimed in earlier on the, um, chat box.
Yeah.
Regarding the title of that Pope plate. But I also have plates in which it's the same plate and on the back it has two different titles. So I don't know if he also would have done that, just used the same image and then shifted the title.
What he did was he, um, he was really, with the plates, he was really, uh, uh, it's a fusion of collage, what was available to him visually.
Right.
What, how he could twist it to his own thought. And so with the, with the plates, um, especially the plates that you're, that Judy's showing now, the, the, the flag and, um, uh, some earlier pieces. He, uh, he had all, tons and tons of commercial, uh, details that he bought by the sheet that he would never tell the students where he got. And he would take, and he had a great pair of whis scissors. And he had, and he would just start cutting things up and putting them out there. And then he said, I need a title, I need a title. Then you give him a title, you know? And then, you know, that could take all day, you know? And, uh, he, he, he could, whatever was in front of him, he could work with. That was what it is. He didn't originate necessarily anything when I was around. He, he could just take it and twist it. And he was magnificent at it. Uh, and, and also, I, I just want to say one last thing and I'll shut up. Is that, uh, when he made those, uh, pieces out of slabs, there was never any wasted clay. You could go into his studio and be immaculate. There would never be little scraps of clay sitting around, ever. Cause he integrated everything.
But that's his whole demeanor, don't you think?
Yeah.
You know, was neat and clean and tidy and his Fu Manchu mustache.
Yeah, yeah.
Always properly combed. He had a little comb in his pocket and it also pared down his life of just a black suit and a white suit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Tons of t-shirts were just, uh, uh, an indication of that. Um, I, um, there was something, oh, I have to tell you a little secret, which is not going to be a secret now. One of the only things that I really, really saved, that I didn't give to the Smithsonian because I just shipped off boxes and boxes of all his letters and archives, just like a few months ago. I saved his decals. I have his original box, file box of all the decals of all of these plates. So I didn't want them to go out in the world because I didn't want mimicking taking place. You know, it was like, um, like, uh, you know, we had a case of, at Inseca, we, we, I was going to be on this panel of, uh, the, the power of marking your work and artists marking work. There were lots of people out there who were using that paisley decal and making little cottlers. So, um, back stamps are very important for authenticating work. But maybe, I don't know, I, I trust that some of you will tell me what, how to properly, I guess a museum should have them, right, Garth?
Yeah, we, we can talk. Uh, so Judy, I want to point out, we might have 10 more minutes to kind of, uh, touch on things. And we probably won't get your house tour, uh, which maybe we'll leave for another time. But I want to make sure that we have a little bit of time to talk about his monumental works and, um, you know, the last creative phase of his life.
I, you know, I pulled everything out from shelves and put it on the table. I would forego, um, the rest of this talk if we just went into my.
That would be fine too. I, I always like looking at artwork directly, which is what this series was born out of as well.
Why don't we, why don't we have such a fabulous audience?
Yes.
What they want. This next part, I was going to go into his silhouette and the use of his self-portrait. But that, you know, can be, um, you know, I don't know, let, let everyone chime in. They want to see the real pieces in the collection or you want to move on?
I vote, I vote, let's go, uh, see your collection. And I think you're getting lots of those positive comments.
Okay.
So if you wouldn't mind unsharing your screen, uh, and then you can walk into your living room and I will continue with the real thing and not the ersatz thing.
All right, I just want to show you one picture that I put at the end here. And that's Howard, when he was really relaxing in my backyard. And that he did have a chance to, um, to relax. And then those of you who remember Supermud, he came out with shirtless with these songs. Throw, throw, throw your clay, throw it every day. All, all these fabulous lyrics that he wrote, um, that we should sing. And he had everyone at Supermud in Pennsylvania. That was before Inseca or maybe during Inseca, I don't remember. But, um, this raku sung to smoke gets in your eyes. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna now, um, uh, anyway, do any of you remember the Supermuds? Mark, don't you remember singing those songs?
A lot of people don't remember a lot about Supermuds.
Okay, uh, now, uh, stop share, okay.
Yeah, there you go. And so you can do your quick Brady Bunch, uh, um, switch. Uh, Paul, anything that you'd like to sort of chime in? And it's, and also it's really amazing to have, uh, you and, uh, Erv chiming in a perfect amount of, um, sort of reality.
It's almost as though I could see this going on for hours and people, I mean, and learning from each other. And because there's so many people with different histories, that's what's really fascinating. And I inherited, you know, this portion of the estate after Garth Clark and Shaw Guido and what I have in terms of, um, inventory, you know, the books, some other documentation. But there is a lot, like, there isn't as much information out there. But there are people that have this knowledge. My friend Kathy Dombach, who was in school at Ohio State, you know, knew him. So I'm just thinking, it's really a shame that there isn't opportunities for this, this generation to really document everything, not only, let's say, their teachers, but then also themselves so that this information becomes available for future generations. That it really expand upon. At the same time, I'm interested in how, you know, an artist of an earlier generation has inspired me as an artist and my thinking about certain, not only ceramics and art, but also, uh, issues within the LGBTQ community. And, um, how it's constantly changing as generations and different, the culture changes too.
Yeah, and I, I see a lot of parallels.
Do you, do you see me here?
I do, so I'm going to pin you so that we can, uh, see you exclusively. And, uh, we've got a little bit of time. Um, and then I'll encourage everybody to stick around. Uh, I'm going to stop the recording in about 10 minutes and feel free to unmute yourself and turn on your camera and say hi.
Okay. I was wondering, since so many people are here knowing, I have this portrait of Howard that one of, somebody made, Mark or Erv or anyone, do you know who did this portrait of Howard? No. Anyway, write it in. Anyway, here's the cat. Can you see it or am I going the wrong way?
No, it looks great.
Okay. Then I wanted to show you, um, his mugs, I drink from them. That, that was in, at Ohio State, um, the, um, the thrown quality of what he, uh, how good his throwing was. He also studied glass. When he got to, up to Seattle, uh, he spent some time at Pilchuck. And, uh, this was, uh, just a sample of his glass work. This is a piece of, um, of the, um, corn cob series, but this was just the shape. I called them elephant turds, but they were, um, the shape at least that he used. But then he started rolling these in the clay, in the corn cob. And then I wanted to show you the maquette of the piece. It's of only like four inches tall, uh, the piece that I showed you earlier. And then this is a piece of the, um, am I stepping back enough? Do you see?
Yeah, it looks great.
Okay. And so, um, that is the, um, I, I just love the handedness. I'm going to get really close to look at his fingers and pushing the clay. I mean, as, um, really getting into the dirty part of it. And I wanted to show you the inside. Yesterday, Paul wanted to say how it was attached inside. So I wanted you to see that it was just a leaf of the tear and repair. Just, you know, just pressing it into the wet clay. Um, and then I love the, the, the void, the holes that he put into it. Just, I think it lightens it up and it does reiterate the stretching of, um, the ooze. Not unlike, it's funny that I have it in front of these Volker's plates, isn't it? I just realized that it's right in front of all those stretching and pushing of the clay from the Volker's place. And then here's another one of those, um, of the, I wanted you to see the inside. I mean, that is so sexy. And it just, it's just is so much about sex.
So right now, while we're talking about sex and surface, Judy, uh, I wanted to point out something that we talked about yesterday, which is, uh, I think a lot of people don't have an experience of Howard's later work directly and haven't gotten, you know, maybe have just seen them in the face to Facebook uh, or online. Um, and you can see through all of these pieces that, you know, he reveled in these very careful surfaces. But the more geometric later pieces contain this depth of surface, but, um, it, it's sublimated a little bit more. Can either you or Paul talk about that?
Well, I just wanted to transition now because time is short. But I want you to see, I was going to get into the, uh, self-portraits and the personality of himself, uh, showing the Fu Manchu and the profile. I have it here on two pieces. This one is called Split Personality. And this one is in four parts. I'm going to get much closer. So there's a fabulous sanding, uh, of course, that is done on all these chisel parts. One is gold, the other is marble, again, the interplay of surface. And, but it's all clay, so that juxtaposition. But the wonderful sanding, I think Howard's assistant is now, oh, I forgot his name for a minute. He works with Patty now. But I want you to see this as a, you know, it's split right here. So it's four, each piece is two, is two pieces. And the under, the other side of this, which is outside, you can see it facing in, is all black. And then the other one about Howard, about his personality, again, is using, Marty, would you come over? Can you lift that lid, that top off or is it too far? But I wanted you to see.
Good collaboration.
I wanted you to see, this is Howard, it's called Cotler Posed as a Cubist. And, um, that, yeah, the top comes off. Oh, I don't believe it. But anyway, the top comes off. It's just like the perfume bottle. And, uh, that's why, and then look how beautiful the bot-, the base is. Can you, let's see, can you see that? How it comes right into the, into the bottom, just beautifully done. And then last, well, I want to show you the large piece, the, you know, this is what he did in 89, the year of his, um, death. The first part of the year because he died, it was only took six months. And then this is the little dog. And I, I researched all the little dogs to show you where he took so much of this from. So, and this is the ashtray. And then I love this part because this part is the screw that comes out from the ashtray. And it's kept separate and it moves. And then if you look inside, it's all gold leaf. It's not glazed on, it's actual leaf. And then this is the, um, and the dog moves. I mean, obviously it's, 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 it's moves like I'm moving it now. Um, what else do I want to show? Why, so, oh, and the last one, that's of the lo-, the later larger pieces. And then this is the lettuce leaf. I did, uh, Georgia O'Keeffe, um, lilies here in the lettuce one here. Sorry, there's so much other workaround, like the viola fry, but the house is full.
Yeah, the fitting.
Um, do you want to see the plates? Do we have time?
Let's see, uh, it is exactly 2:30 now.
Okay, good.
Let's end with them, so that, that's great.
Oh, wait, let me just show you Squirrel Heaven. Oh, wait, let me just show you that squirrel heaven is right here. Sorry for the light on it. But again, like you showed the back, but look at the beautiful wood base that it's on. Again, Mark, yeah, that's right. Mark, you knew about in Seattle.
Yes.
And Irv too, right? So I don't know who made the bases, but they were great. That's it from my, I'm sorry I didn't get into the other half, but maybe it's to be continued.
So let's make some pinky swears. You know, I know that as a curator and having the platform of the Everson, Howard's never far from our thoughts. And, you know, I know that I will, in my curatorial career, be cooking up something around Howard and the ways that he affected not just his students, but his students' students and beyond. So I'm going to stop the recording in a moment, but I'd like to thank Paul, I'd like to thank Judy, I'd like to thank, you know, Irv and Mark and so many people who knew Howard. I encourage you to turn on your cameras and say hi, and we can keep the conversation going for another 15 minutes, maybe. Feel free to share now that we won't be recording. But join us next week. I don't have all of the details nailed down for next week, but you can find us at www.everson.org or social media. And the Zoom link that you follow today will be good for next week as well. So keep that in mind.
Since we're advertising, I had all this time. I had a chance to revamp my website. So judyschwarz.com has just launched today. So have some articles there on Howard and the Norotaki articles as well.
And Paul, what is on top at Paul Cottula Projects once the air conditioning is fixed and the pandemic is over?
I had to end a show of a painter named Jim Shatlin, who was from Ohio, originally Finley, Ohio, and then was a pivotal player in the Detroit art scene in the 70s. So his show will continue, it'll restart. And then I'm presenting an exhibition called Mass Murder by Peter Williams, an African-American artist whose show was to debut earlier. This particular installation was shown at Q Foundation in New York two years ago, and it has to do with police brutality and incarceration. So it's a very, it's just happened at the right time.
It was what we started talking about with the session today, and it's how we'll end it as well. So thanks, everybody. And I'm going to end the recording and feel free to unmute yourselves and say hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.